And recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Department of Education, of the Alpha Independent School District Number One of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in public view in the office of this district.
Consent agenda, all following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote, unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Three point one addition of items of new business to be included.
There are, there are no new items.
Three point two minutes of the October third, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Approval of the financial report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers, approval of the child nutrition report. There are many items of surplus.
Okay, we'll go back to agenda item three point one. Or excuse me, three point two, our minutes from our October third, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Do not see any errors there. If you will go to agenda item three point three, our top attachment are the investments. You can see those three pages there. All those investments are current and today. If you will look at the second attachment. This is our chargeables for the month of October. You can see the gross production. We are up approximately two hundred thirty-four thousand. Motor vehicle, we continue to be down in that area. Our REA tax, we are up thirty-six thousand approximately. School land area is up twenty-nine hundred. And county four mill tax, we are down there nine hundred ninety-six. Have not really started collecting that until the month of October or December. Also wanted to just kind of draw your attention up here to the active panel. Wanted to show you, had talked to you earlier about bringing this to you more often, to look at our monthly spreadsheet or chart for projected revenue. And so want to point kind of out, we talked about ad verborum in our county four mill. You can see we haven't collected any of that revenue as of two thousand twenty-three. Want to also point out again, we have our estimate of needs here in that F column. And you can see what we created our budget or what our possible revenue. So we are lower than what our estimate of needs is. We hope obviously that we collect that ad verborum and what Carol's and Associates is predicting. Wanted to kind of point out here, if you look down for instance, at our interest earning, this line thirteen ten. Last year we collected eighty-two thousand. I went with fifty percent collection rate this year to be conservative in that estimate. You can see we're at thirty-eight percent, we're at thirty-eight thousand already. So we're already above, we're getting close to already above that fifty-one percent collection rate. So that's a, that's a good thing at this point in the year. Scroll on down here and kind of show you where we're at with those five different areas on that previous chart. Gross production tax obviously is one of the greatest indicators for our budget and our school health. And so when you look at it, we are at fifty-four percent. As compared to last year, I've predicted eighty percent. We still have a ways to go, but to date, that, that area is collecting better than the past. Notice motor vehicle tax. Carol's and Associate was about an eighty-five, ninety percent collection rate. Four hundred forty-four thousand is what they estimated that we could collect. I was much more conservative and said sixty percent. We are behind on that right now to date thirty percent as compared to last year, twenty-seven percent of our estimate. We really haven't started any of our, when you get down here in the bottom half of this chart, really don't see many of our collections from federal programs yet. We haven't been reimbursed or bought those items to reimburse, being reimbursed for. So we'll see that at a later date. So you can see when you look here at the very bottom and you look at your columns, let me go back up here to the top. So F is our estimate of needs, want to remind you of that. So if you go down here and you look at the bottom of this chart, right now, we've collected forty-eight percent of our estimate of needs, which is very positive, not being halfway through our school year. But again, it's important to be conservative because we all know economically, things are pretty volatile right now across the world. If you look at the bottom half of the chart that I provide you, I've done this graphically also like I do each month. And you can see that pretty similar to what we've done year in and year out. When you compare the numbers, we've seen a revenue increase of two hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred sixty-eight ninety-two. We've spent three hundred sixty thousand, five hundred twenty-two thirty-four more than last year. So pretty good numbers really when you look at years past at where we can be. But again, we still want to be cautious in our expenses and our revenue. Any questions about the finance report? Okay, I'll move on if you have some. Please feel free to ask. Activity funds, if you'll open up the top attachment, this gives our monthly activity funds. All of our activity funds are in good standing. Have not seen much movement after our Blue Bull Sausage fundraiser in those activity funds. And then the bottom attachment is year to date. We have no activity fundraisers for this month, nor do we have any inter-account transfers. Child nutrition, if you will open up that attachment. Have our comparison really for the last three years. You can see that we have a decrease in our numbers. Both breakfast and lunch to date, the month of October. I don't really have that total because we were fairly, we were up on lunches in August and September, but we dropped this last month. And then agenda item three point eight, there are no surplus items. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend it's approved.
Okay, motion. Make motion to accept three point one through three point eight is presented.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase orders. For five funds, four point one general fund as referenced, four point two building fund as referenced, four point three child nutrition fund as referenced.
Okay, we'll go to agenda item four point one and open up the top attachment. Those will be our general fund purchase orders. Purchase order number two ninety-nine for Kami. That is software that allows for editing and PDFs and signing on with Chromebooks. Purchase order number three oh three is a blanket purchase order with Amazon for district supplies. Purchase order number three oh five, Peak Environment. That is our spring for the fall season, district wide. Purchase order number three oh eight, OU Health Science Center, three thousand nine hundred. That's a registration for a sped training. Our sped teachers, a few of our sped teachers will be training on functional behavior analysis and behavior intervention plan development. Purchase order number three ten, Oklahoma Society for Technology Education, one thousand twenty-five, that is our membership registration. Purchase order number three eleven, Croft Country, over a thousand dollars. That's repair Fuel League to Suburban. Purchase order number three seventeen, two thousand two hundred seventy-five, Amplified IT. That is a software vendor that we contract or pay for direct print so that we have an app that allows us to push all print for staff and students to our printers wirelessly. If you look at the bottom attachment, that is our payroll, our general fund. You can see that attachment, those names, those are folk rehab, student substitute, and new hires. Pageant item four point two, our building fund. Just a couple of purchase orders out of our building fund to go over. Purchase order number thirty-three, Gacton Plumbing. That is some locker room repairs in the high school. Old basketball gym locker rooms in preparation for our tournament. Purchase order number thirty-five and thirty-six. One thousand one hundred seventy-four fifty-two and two thousand two hundred sixty-three with Jenkins and Price. That is custodial supplies for the district. And then purchase order number thirty-seven, that is with Vendetti Plumbing for two thousand. That is some repairs to the indoor facility. Bathrooms in the indoor facility. Agenda item four point three. If you'll open up that attachment, we have three purchase orders out of our child nutrition fund. Purchase orders number eighteen and nineteen are both plumbing with Gacton Plumbing and Vendetti Plumbing for four hundred and five hundred dollars. Those are repairs to Lincoln Classroom Sync and various repairs throughout Washington. Purchase order number twenty, eighty-eight sixty-three Keystone, bought supply boards for some communication with their staff and our staff. So that comes out of our child nutrition fund. Any questions regarding agenda item four point one, our general fund? Four point two, building fund. Four point three, child nutrition fund.
General fund, four point one. The three oh eight OU Health Science Registered Sped Training. How many are attending and how many days is that?
Yes. We, it will be over, it's four days.
Okay.
Over five weeks.
Okay.
There will be an AMS team.
Okay.
That will be, there will be four attendees there. And then there's a Washington team that will have five attendees.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions?
Entertainer motion. Item number four.
Make a motion to approve the purchase order in conferences referenced in four point one, four point two, and four point three.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number five, attendance report.
Okay, we do not have any resignations, retirements, or reassignments this month. We want to communicate to you our Teachers of the Year, voted on by peers at the high school. We have Nick Rock at Alba Middle School. We have Kate Christensen at Lincoln Elementary, Cecily Franz at Longfellow, Audra Zadrosny, and at Washington, Kayla Ledman. So congratulations to them, very well deserved. Also thank you to Mrs. Webster. She does a tremendous amount of work when we, they do the application gathering those, getting those out to our community members, to, to those. So thank you to her, congratulations to all those teachers that did a great job. Now I want to have Mrs. Ritchie, if she would come up here and sit by me. Mrs. Ritchie and I have been working together over the last couple of months. And this poor is, talk about it later, so be careful. Over the last couple of months, Mrs. Ritchie and I have been meeting and working together on an amazing gift for Alba Public Schools. We received a phone call about a year ago about a gift from Dr. Quinn, longtime Alba supporter of our golf team. And he has created a, a financial award for our district that is really going to be amazing for our students. One of the caveats to this, Dr. Quinn has helped our students for many, many years through the purchase of golf equipment. He, he has helped our tournament. We don't charge teams any fees to be able to participate in a tournament. So, so he has been someone that has been a, a person that we have been thankful for, for many years. And Dr. Quinn, this left his estate to Alba Public Schools and we are very, very thankful for that gift and the distribution that he has provided us this year is two hundred sixty thousand dollars approximately. And so as we've worked our way through this with attorneys and how we can impact our students and in particular the golf team as his trust has wanted, Mrs. Ritchie has played an incredible part of that and could not have done it without her, without her help. She leads our foundation. There's not a better foundation leader in Oklahoma than Mrs. Ritchie. She is so supportive of our kids. The mini grants that we provide our students is second to none. There, there's nobody like us. And that's a direct result of her, her board. And so I want to, first of all, before I turn it over to Ms. Ritchie, I want to, one of, one of the requirements to this is to create a golf budget. And so everyone knows who I love spreadsheets. And so I immediately began working on a spreadsheet, getting some input from Mrs. Ritchie, our golf coaches, our central office staff members, to try to come up with a, a approximate budget when we meet with the trust for their approval. And so you can see some of the things that, that we are going to be talking to the trust about. Endowed scholarships for students. Golf, a guest golf clinician for our golf team. Tournament host, tournament fees, uniforms, purchasing of vehicles, whether it's a minibus or suburban. And then obviously all the equipment that goes with that. So we are, again, at the beginning of, of beginning stages of that. We will be meeting with the trust in the next couple of weeks to, to look at this budget and garner their input and then bring this back to at a later date to kind of show you where we're at and, and how we, we are working with that trust. So with that being said, as we've worked our way through this, we felt like it was very important, this gift was for Alba Public Schools, but to bring on our partner, the Education Foundation. And so Ms. Ritchie will kind of share some of, some of that with you.
Okay. The initial distribution has been received. It's currently in the vault at Central Office as we work to get the appropriate accounts established at Cleveland's Foundation of Oklahoma, which is where all of the foundation funds are held. I have been sent paperwork to establish the funds. Probably the main things we need to do, since there will be different funds. One of the funds will be a donor advised fund, which we would share the budget with our representatives at CFO, just for additional transparency. The other fund would be the scholarship fund. Once, once a determination is made as to how many dollars from the distribution needs to be for scholarships. The Quinn Trust people are fully on board with scholarships. They believe scholarships for golf students is wonderful and will help improve their education. But they also are firm in their desire to directly benefit the golf program in the Alba Public Schools District. A little side note, Dr. Quinn and his wife came to play at one of the first golf tournaments we did in Oklahoma City, they were from Shawnee. Met us there. Another Gold Bug Alone who had since passed also was a third person for them. And one of our board members, who was a once in two or three years golfer, generously and graciously agreed to be the fourth. And they had, those three Gold Bug Alones plus our board member had so much fun that day. They almost missed lunch because they were so busy golfing. And you know, Austin really reconnected heavily. He was pretty well engaged, but he had so much fun at, at that deal that he really reconnected heavily. So we're honored, we're delighted. When we first got the call, we had an idea of the dollar amount, but they had their children and this was his home, she taught. So education was very important to them and they both were golfers. They traveled the world playing golf. And so here we are.
Do y'all have any questions before we move on regarding this gift?
What will be our role? I mean, is that something that the foundation, our foundation will just approve this? Is this something we must also approve?
No, but it's not going to be an approval process for our board. It will work like our mini grants where we will present a budget to the Quinn Trust for approval. And then we will submit that to the foundation for payment. But I'll tell you that in the, in transparencies, we, we want the board, we want you to be aware of, of what we will be doing with this money and how we will be using it against this budget.
The, the gift is for the Alba Independent School District. The nature and the size of the gift make it necessary to. The district doesn't necessarily need to be depositing funds like this. So it's going to be deposited with the foundation, the Gold Bug Foundation. And it will, when dispersionism need to be made, it will work very much like a PEO system. And it will be within parameters of the budget that the, that you all approve and send to the Quinn Trust people to approve. And so then when it's time to start funding the budget, PEO system will be used. We will reimburse the district for those things.
So will the, will the program, since every activity fund is approved by the board and every amount, even the external amounts that are here are approved by the board. I was just thinking how that money is spent as an external amount probably should be run through each year. I would think is an approval process by the board, just not, not, just like we do everything else. It comes in externally and to help our people internally. Okay? I don't, approval may not be the right word, but I think it should be presented each year or something like that. But I, I just feel like that anyway, since it's actually going to go for employees of the district, correct? Equipment of the district. Then it becomes owned by the district, right?
Okay.
So anyway, the news on this committee? Is there a committee that put together this?
No, we, we had Mrs. Ritchie, myself, Dalton Beeler, Mindy White, Mrs. Nettles. Who else have we asked, right? No, no committee. We, and to answer your question, there's no committee. We asked those directly involved with the golf program.
Very impressive. And all this mention, this is only the first distribution. This should take, this should be a twenty-year process.
Which is wonderful. Totally excited. Very, very blessed. Any other questions?
No, but I would like to commend Mrs. Ritchie. I will tell you that her diligence in the relationships that the foundation builds with our alum is what causes these things to happen. A lot of work, everything that's worth doing is. But you know, there was a lot of, I, I remember there was a lot of concern when the golf tournament was moved from Alba to Oklahoma City. And some, and it was interesting how many of our Oklahoma City alum participated and then it has very prosperous gifts. So thank you for your diligence. Yeah, lucky me, eleven out of Oklahoma.
I was looking for that.
That's like, I'm gonna die, it's gonna be on my casket.
Anyway.
I mean that, that's what it takes, is the networking and reaching out. And I will say one other thing, the Community Foundation met on our campus and had a luncheon. They speak very highly of the Gold Bug Foundation as well as community and how things are handled. So it's very easily accessed by our students thanks to that hard work and the scholarships. And it's making a big difference in a lot of people's lives. So they, I was just walking through and they told me that. I'm a Gold Bug, so anyway, thank you for what you do.
And we probably need to have another metro area golf tournament. We missed, well, of course, we couldn't close everything, but we missed a year or two before that. Our favorite golf course lost their greens. And so that canceled that year. And then the weather canceled the next year after that. And so we need to get back down there to have another one because they're, they're very well attended. In fact, the first one funded the, the big technology. So it's our one-to-one initiative, several churches. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like a copy. Is there others to be like a copy of that? I would too.
Sure, I will, I will. I may have copies, I will look in. Okay, so I'll give you some copies of this. This is the twenty-one, twenty-two OSTP testing report. We're not going to present anything on that tonight, but wanted you all to be able to review this report. And then Mr. Beely has taken a lot of time to put this together. And if you have some questions then next month, he will do a presentation lesson next month. And if you've got any questions, happy to look at those or answer any of those questions. So that is from last year's state assessment. Okay? So then next, we're going to talk about our resources. And so Mrs. Tucker has done an incredible job of putting together information. We've had a couple of committee meetings, stakeholder meetings. We've surveyed staff. We've surveyed in the neighborhood of fifty community members. And, and as I said, she's done a really good job of putting together this presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to her and she can kind of bring you up to date as to where we are in this process. Again, this is, I mean, you can see how many pages this is.
Thirty-five.
Yeah. Review this over the course of the next month. And if you have any questions, we'll, we'll fill those questions also at next monthly meeting. Just give kind of a quick overview right now.
This will be a tough follow-up, you know, from getting money to wanting to now spend money. Big, you know, school business. And as you can see, we started with a timeline of kind of where this incoming facilities committee started back from May twenty-two, two thousand nineteen with the original committee members. And then we met, COVID kind of hit, we took a pause. We said that we met November twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. And that's when we used the building assessment tool. We broke into groups by site with those, that building assessment tool that we use, which is part of our strategic plan, to really dive into each building and what it needed. We also provided building tours that came out of that, that meeting we had. Everyone, you know, was really curious of what do these buildings look like? When we talk about the slope, as I look and I see Mr. Argo had to put a book underneath the table to make it level. But you can't really understand it until you walk through it. So we offered tours to all the buildings and to the people in the committee. And then we met back and reviewed what those tours, what we came out of those tours, the questions and answers. And that was the, and Mark- And that was the, and March last year, then to this year, September 27, October 20, we've been reviewing data, sending out surveys to both our district staff and to the committees. And you're gonna see that information in this presentation. And then we were meeting again next week to kind of talk about finances and where we go from here.
So as you look through this, and I'm just gonna kind of click through these. And again, Mrs. Tucker really put this together. I believe it's really easy to read and easy to understand. But she went through with each site and listed their priorities. In just a second, I will hand you out the spreadsheets that were created to help us get these priorities. So I want to mention again, we had about 72 staff respondents, is that about right? It's about 72, it's on here somewhere. And we had around 50 stakeholders. Everyone was given the same survey instrument and on our, on our, on our survey. And so we took that information and from that information prioritized it. We met with Mr. Maharry at the college to make sure that I was doing my statistics correctly and making sure how my spreadsheet is set up. And so he was a big help in this also. But as you look through that, you'll see some information on each site. I also want to mention, you will see comments that we received regarding moving the principal's office back upstairs into the main part of the high school. We believe that is the best place for our principals to be, is near students and with students. And so, you know, we, it's something we're seriously looking at. But creating that move creates some challenges. What do you do with the office below? Things, times have changed so much, we can't have someone check in and walk through a building to get to an office. And so what do we do there? And so as you read through, you'll see some comments from staff and stakeholders who've given some really good suggestions on what to do there. You can see transportation comments. We surveyed about one elementary school. You can see the comments there, which I'll tell you, majority is neutral, no opinion on that, which is good information to have as we move forward. And so I'll turn it over to Allison to talk about this next part.
And as you look through that, you'll see that we color-coded the comments. So everything in red came out of the district, everything blue came out of, or, excuse me, everything red came out of the community, the committee. And then everything blue came out of the district employees. That way you can kind of compare and know where that information came from. And really, a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff lined up, surprisingly. A lot of thought process were the same. We also broke into groups and talked about, you know, paving. And what does that look like now that we're coming out of COVID? And we had a lot of different thought processes probably prior to, is it looked different, is it the same? So high school broke up, broke into a group, middle school, and then the elementaries were in a group. And please jump in if I'm misrepresenting what was said in the groups that I was not part of. But for minors, what came out of the high school group was, again, you know, still no parking by the gym. That, that needs to happen, there needs to be expansion there. If we move, which is, move the principal's office back up to the top, then this is your main entrance, and right now it's just that one lane. We really need to look at, and there is a question on the survey that you'll see the answers for too. Do we do a circle drive? What do we do up here now if the main office is up here? And so even though when you look at the answers of what we should do, that was also done prior to then really knowing the thought process that we're really looking at moving that principal's office. So it's probably going to change how they really would, people really would feel about what we need to do up here than maybe what the results say prior to asking them what to do. And then they're not knowing, hey, we're really gonna, we really think we're gonna do that up there. So we definitely need to do something with the parking up here, whether it be a circle drive so that there's easy access into the office, dropping off kids, picking up kids, so that they can get into the principal's office safely. They talked about some lining in the north parking lot, maybe creating a green space in here and not doing a full two lane, correct, through the snake? But access into here to the principal's office, and then maybe doing some kind of green space here for the students. You could do some outdoor learning activities out there, and it's not going to be open to drive through like it is now. You guys have it currently shut down during the day. But maybe making that a more permanent situation. Also talked about the parking from the auditorium. Currently, the parking ends here. And originally, they had talked about expanding the parking lot both ways. Because when, if you go to a program up there, you'll see they park on the grass anyways and make their own parking. But really, they keep their parking pretty much right in here and don't really go up into this green space right here. So we could expand the parking here and still leave that green space that some people are concerned about losing. So that came out of that committee as well. Needing northeast entrance handicap parking.
Allison, just one question right there. Maybe you don't want questions as we go. When you say the majority that are, some people that are interested in losing that green space, is that more of our internal people or external people?
External.
Does it happen half?
External.
External, okay.
Yes. And that, that really came from 2019 drainage and where the water's gonna go on the street and all that kind of stuff, which was a really good thought.
That is a good thought.
Okay. Talked about some French drains, now is that in this area?
We talked about it because of some flooding along the office area and along the cafeteria area. There's some water that comes in and runs, so.
Well, I think also, one of the challenges with all of that too is going to be the drainage down that, down the Snake Drive. Because you have to move all that water. That water all has to move, and it's really not, there's not enough rise to push it down there to the parking lot, to the north parking lot. So their other option at one time was to dump it out into the football field, the hill. And we told them, we can't do that, we've already got too much erosion that way. And so the challenge then is how are you gonna push that through French drains? And I mean, there's ways, I mean, but that was one of the other challenges that was discussed.
That's the main that I have, is did I, is there anything important I missed out?
No, it's good.
Okay. Next up is the middle school. And in their committee, they talked a lot about how currently they do have their drop-off and pickup, which, I'm not sure what street that is. That's Street, 7th? No?
Yes.
7th Street. And they like it. On Flynn, it's really too busy and congestion, and that they felt like doing a circle drive up there would not be ideal. They do like how it's working right now. Discussed, you know, in a great perfect world, maybe buying some of these houses that aren't being lived in and aren't fit to live in, and buying some of that property back there where you could build parking lots back there. They also had an interesting discussion about flipping the gym. So the main interest would be in the back, maybe adding gate concession, expanding that, and then parking here where they would, they would come here versus parking, you'd have them to walk all the way around. Is there any other big ideas that I missed?
Nope.
You're gonna get into the playground.
That would get into green space for the playground, you are correct.
Does that number one parking lot do away with all that green space?
Yes. And I might, let me say something about these drawings. These were done back originally, so these are not, this is more just to kind of give you a ballpark of the campus. Please don't think that that, this is anything that is gonna happen or has happened.
Because currently, one and five are grass.
Yes.
Well, and, and nobody was truly greatly in favor of number one going to a parking lot. Like it wouldn't, our drop-off and everything, you know, from all the information we had, it's, it's not bad. People aren't, you know, overly concerned about it right now. Since we, you know, blocked off the street and made it a one-way, you know, after school and before school, that's okay. Now, the teachers didn't love number five going to all, you know, all parking. So, I mean, they would kind of like to do like a combo, if we could put some basketball goals out there, you know, so it could be basketball goal slash parking. We've seen some other schools do that. The problem that we, I believe that we'll really run into is, that is a horrible, it's a horrible drainage streak. 8th Street, you know, that's down there by the, you know, three, four blocks to the north, and that's the main city drop-off for all the water. So those roads are often flooded tremendously.
It's actually 9th Street.
9th Street, okay, I have it backwards.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, 9th and then 10th, yep.
9th and then 8th.
Anyway, so those are some things that we, yeah, that we discussed.
Lincoln, the committee discussed, now that there's this access road right here that goes up to the highway, possibly, and there's a big field, possibly using some parking right here where you could have an entrance and exit quickly without having to really go in. Because I know Jenny's concern was possibly parking, or, or the playground. And so to keep it here localized where they're not in and out of your playground. However, the school, I found out after this meeting, does, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's some canyon area in here, and we do, or between the homes?
Right back here. So from right outside this door, all the way down.
Possibly, could there be some parking to, to put in there? I don't know what that grade looks like to know any of those things, but that was brought up.
That's a part of our playground.
You said what?
That's the main part of our playground.
That closer to the house.
The kids use that.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. Longfellow, it was discussed having some, you know, right, even right now, you could almost have some quick access to do some parking here. And this, this is not used, this is outside of our gated area. The only time it is used is for buses on pickup and drop-off. You know, we could go right there and park on the grass immediately if we needed to. Another idea which would take more to do is this fence is in pretty rough shape. Moving the fence in and doing parking here, where it'd be closer access into the building. Those were the two main areas. Someone had brought more street parking here, but really the logistics of how that works for our drop-off and pickup, that wouldn't be an ideal place to put parking for us. It would be more back here or adding parking on the east side. And then Washington, one of the discussions brought up was, no, there already is parking here. It can't be utilized because of buses. You know, if, if you can move buses maybe along the side, I know that you'd have to think, one of the members thought they had it all thought out, but when I thought about it, I haven't had a chance to really sit down with Mr. Beely much. There is currently, the way they come in for circle drives is through here. So you would have to think that out to make sure you're not creating another problem over here. But the thought was if you could put bus in here, and now all of a sudden you have this parking open up. Another thought was, and this was someone who brought it up actually, and you'll see it in the comments, was, again, you got some questionable housing over here between the middle school and Washington. Buy some of that, move busing there and put some parking there.
Access to both schools.
Access to both schools. So those are some thoughts. And like I said, you know, this question was asked, and should we create a circle drive, drop-off area in the Snake Drive, was really, no one, I don't know if people connected that, what we were thinking, because we kind of really put it out there. That possibly would change the answers.
Which school is that?
This would be the high school, if we move the principal's office back upstairs. So that would definitely, we need to rethink that.
So you can, you can go through here, lots of great comments, great feedback. Like I said, read, read through that.
If I saw a lot of repetition, I would put a number like this was about four times. So I'd have to put every single one in there. Lots of information there, yes.
So then we're gonna meet November 15 at Longfellow Library to talk a little bit about, you know, where we are with some of these previously. We're gonna meet, we're not gonna meet tomorrow with a structural engineer from Corbin Mertz Haney Architecture Firm to come look at Longfellow, look at some of our drainage issues, just kind of get another perspective. And so bring that back to the committee, and then of course, we'll bring that information back to the board in December. Any questions for Mrs. Tucker? Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
No, but I would also like, then, Dr. I've been privileged to attend to the games from the mic stand. It's been a lot of work, and there is a lot of information, so thank you for getting on with that. You certainly mentioned, I appreciate the time to look at it between now and December. Highlight. Things that I really, it's a lot of stuff, but thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Last thing that I have, I mentioned Corbin Mertz Haney Architecture. We're going to also be looking at our roofing issues tomorrow. Mentioned in previous four meetings, our insurance claim, that has been settled. And so they are doing some work at our senior citizen center on the roof there. And so they're gonna be up here looking for some potential structural issues that we have, and then also potential roofing projects throughout the district tomorrow. That is all I have.
Thank you. I'm number 6.0, item of current business. 6.1, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer appointment to applicant number one, non-certified position for the 2223 school year.
Offer a paraprofessional position to applicant, I mean, is Owen, she will be a paraprofessional in Washington. And I would recommend approval of her hiring.
So moved.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
I'm number 6.2, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the revised extra duty salary schedule for school year 23.
Okay, we bring this back to the board, additional item here to add John Johnson as our assistant basketball coach at the middle school. If you would look at that, it's on the third page, highlighted. John has done a fantastic job for our district. You can see how busy he is working with our students. So we'd recommend it, board, this revised extra due schedule for applicant.
Slater? Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.3, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following board dates as referenced for calendar year 2023.
So we have our board meeting dates for calendar year 2023. All of these are the first Monday of the month, except for September, January 10th, July 11th, and June 28th. We'll continue to meet at Alba High School unless we do a change of location for two persons like we are tonight. We're meeting in the business. There are no questions regarding our meeting dates, I would recommend approval. Thank you, Allison, we're gonna move through 6.3.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
I have number 6.4, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the Board of Education election resolution to call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from office number three.
You can see the election resolution for office number three. The filing period begins December 5th and ends at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, December 7th. We bear the cost of these elections, and a legal notice must be published by the election. There are no questions, I would recommend approval of our election resolution. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of our election resolution.
So move.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number 6.5, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following precinct, precincts as referenced, Woods County and Alfa County.
So we have closed these precincts that you see referenced in the agenda items of the course of the last at least four to five years. Just give you some information regarding the closure of those precincts. The district bears $500 for the cost of those elections. The election board sends each person in those precincts absentee ballots, so all of them will receive those. Right now, in our first precinct, 020110, there are six voters. In the next one with the last three of 220, there are three voters. And the last one in Alfa County with numbers 310, there are 13. The same is true for the precinct in Woods County, there are nine voters in that one. The majority of these folks have voted by absentee ballot in the past, with information provided by the election. I would make the recommendation that we approve, that we close the precincts as referenced in agenda item 6.5.
They also can go into the election board offices and vote early, so they do not have to have absentee, it's very, sending, they've extended those days, two or three days. I actually voted last week, the election board office. Very handy. Do I entertain a motion?
I think the motion would be approved, 6.5.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, Mrs. Webster is going to take us on a tour.
Three hours.
Three-hour tour, right? And so we'll let her kind of lead the way. If you have any questions, as we're, as she's showing you some of the different locations, we're not gonna go completely through all four floors. Just want to mention before we leave here, this was one of the concerns from our committee this morning. If you notice, and we can all stand up here, if you notice, there is a, where we are sitting is a slope to that floor, which is, which, you know, we anticipate there's some structural issues there. You can also notice, you can see it when you look at that wall on the northeast corner, and you can see that there's a, a difference there in that corner. And so that is part of what we're gonna be looking at tomorrow, is why is this floor sloping the way it is? Is there something we need to be doing to address that issue? There's also some foundational cracks on that east wall that we're gonna have them look at. Okay, so everyone wants to follow Mrs. Webster?